Good afternoon. We are going to call this meeting to order, but before we do that, I just want to give another round of applause for the Bliss Elementary Choir students. I think they're pretty fantastic. It is 5:06 and I'm going to call the meeting to order, which takes us to item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can please stand. And if you can now join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. This will bring us to item number four, which is our December recognitions. If the trustees can come to the front. And Ms. Rodriguez, I'll hand it over to you.
Of the season, we would like to kick off this month's recognition by showcasing our amazing student artists, student artists who helped us design the official El Paso ISD holiday card. Hundreds of entries of incredible artwork were submitted by our students across the district. First, second, and third place winners were recognized in three categories: elementary, middle, and high school. Our first place winner for elementary category is Kenia Hernandez, a fifth grader at Tippin Elementary, accompanied by her art teacher Ivan Torres and principal Gina Rodriguez. Can you please join us in the front?
Yeah, the parents. Can we have the parents meet towards the... So we can see your card.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next first place winner for the middle school category is Leila Chang, a sixth grader at Hartley Pre-K 8, with art teacher Carlos Holguin.
You should show the artwork.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Designs were featured prominently in the holiday card the superintendent's office sent out to dignitaries and other communities throughout the region. Additionally, each of the winners' art teachers received a $400 award for art supplies for the classroom. Please join me in congratulating them all.
Congratulations.
The next recognition is for a longtime teacher at Andrus High School, Mr. Michael Herrera. Mr. Herrera is a veteran of the United States Air Force and received his bachelor's in 2005 and his master's, both from the University of Texas at El Paso. His students describe him as a passionate teacher who cares deeply about his students. Mr. Herrera was our 2019-2020 Secondary Teacher of the Year, so it's to nobody's surprise that he has received the 2023 Class Nobel Educator of Distinction from the esteemed National Society of High School Scholars. This prestigious recognition acknowledges Herrera's untiring commitment to academic excellence and his profound impact on his students. Mr. Herrera was nominated for this distinction by one of his students who greatly admires his exceptional contributions to their academic journey and personal growth. His tireless passion and dedication has been instrumental in inspiring his students to excel as scholars, leaders, and responsible citizens. As a recipient of this award, Mr. Herrera will have the opportunity to attend member events nationwide and receive a personalized certificate in honor of the class Nobel. He is also eligible to compete for this prestigious Educator of the Year award. Let's congratulate Mr. Herrera with a huge round of applause.
Congratulations.
The Great Khalid Foundation is committed to impacting the lives of children by alleviating the burden of need. They reach out when it matters most, when a supportive gesture can make all the difference. They believe that the power of music not only has the ability to build confidence, but that it positively impacts social change for children, families, and communities. A quote by Khalid: "I created a foundation that supports music in schools and undeserved communities. It starts in El Paso, and my goal is to provide resources and help bridge education and prominent music programs in the city." Since 2017, Khalid has personally distributed thousands of Christmas gifts to children in the El Paso area. The Great Khalid Foundation is committed to preserving the holiday season for families in need. We appreciate that year after year, the Great Khalid Foundation has been generous to campuses all across El Paso ISD. Let's welcome Foundation Board Member Anthony Tomaczki with a round of applause. Thank you. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you and happy holidays.
This will take us to item number five, which is our public forum. And if you can direct your attention to the screens for instructions.
The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district, and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respect for other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez, if you can go ahead and read out the names.
Ross Moore.
Board President Erobali, Board Members Masai Veda. My name is Ross Moore, President El Paso AFT. This is the EPAFT's 12 Days of Christmas. I've had, I've done this a couple of times. My apologies to Frederick Austin. By the way, the 12th day of Christmas is January 5th, the Friday before EPISD returns, so you have plenty of time to fill the list. I actually think you filled the 10th day already. The first day, a raise. Same percentage as the soups. Next month's is the soups evaluation and contract negotiations. While a raise is routine, the successes that would give the soup a raise are really the work of the rank-and-file employees of this district. They make her succeed. On the second day, that EPISD honors its 2016 bond contract with the voters. Direct the funds from Moorhead Sale to employee compensation as promised. This is a matter of honor. On the third day, end lesson plans. Use the exception by HB 1605's change to TEC 11164, the Paperwork Reduction Act. You could even reduce pointless paperwork more as TEC 11164 requires you to do. On the fourth day, end meaningless meetings. When an email or a flyer will do, why waste an hour or two of an employee's scariest resource? Time. Five, restore real due process. Restore Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Fourteenth Amendment rights and protections in EPISD. Six, focus on sped service, not paperwork. Staff and resource sped properly. Become a district that attracts and retains sped professionals. Don't be like a charter school that drives out its special needs students. Instead, let's care for them. Stop profiting off of kids by using cheap labor. Use permanent employees, not substitutes. Temporarily, employees cost less than permanent employees, like teachers. The truism, "you get what you pay for," is in play. This practice is harming children. On the eighth day, provide a real student-driven curriculum. Replace the computer-driven lockstep curriculum, eureka and amplify, with student- and teacher-driven curriculum that will foster learning and respects the uniqueness and individuality of each student. On the ninth day, written guidance. There's this really neat invention that's been around for 5,500 years. It's called writing. A lot of folks are using it, but not EPISD. EPISD would rather use oral tradition and verbal guidance. Why? It's easier. And as Dr. Garcia said, there is no paper trail. Hmm. But it also, lack of written instructions also are causing a lot of confusion out on the campuses. Tenth day, don't mess with the Coronado Farm. It looks like, based on conversations, we actually got that, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Your three minutes are up.
And in closing, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all here and to all a good night.
Next speaker, Patricia Amenzaga. Amenzaga.
Board President Erobali, Board Members, and Ms. Sayavedra. Imagine being a staff teacher and receiving a call from an associate superintendent that tells you they have found a permanent place for you. He then proceeds to tell you that it's a sweet deal and that you're going to love it. And then he tells you it's Taya's Academy. You arrive for your first day escorted to a room and left there. Not greeted, not supported, not told what you're supposed to teach. And then in this sweet setup, you find out it's a classroom where you're going to teach physical education. But you also have a small yard. No direction, no explanation of how the school runs, no emails as a faculty member until almost a month later. No information as to other classes you're going to be teaching. Then the students arrive. You are threatened with bodily harm, cussed out beyond your wildest imagination, all in the first five minutes. You always say that you've heard it all, but oh no, you haven't. Fights almost on a daily basis. Drugs, guns, vapes brought into the building. Teachers physically assaulted by middle school female students. And then they're back in school in a few days. Where is the oversight of this school? It took a full-out fight, students going to the hospital, police officers hurt, and the news media to get your attention. How do you teach in a school that has gone on for so long without support from admin or central office? Students who do nothing? You give them work and they make paper airplanes and throw them at you. Students in administration's face yelling and cussing? How do you teach here? One teacher had the answer: "You do what you can, but the most important thing is walking out alive at the end of the day." No one should have to worry about bodily harm every minute of every day. This school and its teachers have been ignored for far too long. Changes need to be made sooner rather than later. The safety and the lives of your teachers and your students depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Gallardo. Margaret Gallardo.
Good afternoon, Board President Erobali, Board Members, Ms. Sayavedra. I am Margaret Gallardo, a 23-year employee of EPISD. I am the sped inclusion resource teacher at Moreno Elementary and the vice president of El Paso Teachers Association. On behalf of the El Paso Teachers Association Board and all our members, I would like to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. May the new year bring us compassion, understanding, and goodwill for each other, the faculty and staff of EPISD, but most importantly, the students which we serve. God bless you and thank you.
Gloria Montes Nicholson.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, trustees, and the superintendent. My name is Gloria Montes Nicholson. I am here because I am trying to get information and the process to name the track after Coach McKillop at El Paso High School. He served there for over 41 years. He had, when I was there, we won two state championships back in '78 and '79. And because of his knowledge and his faith and him telling us to run harder and believe in us, and I wouldn't have not accomplished or have been the runner that I was. And I just really wanted to get some information in the process because I've been trying to do this over for the last maybe two years. And I do have a couple of pictures that I would like for you guys to see. It breaks my heart. He just turned 77 years old in September. So back in April of last year, I was able to go and pick him up at his home, and he was willing of going with me. He does have Alzheimer's. Two weeks ago, he fell and broke his hip. And it's just getting worse and worse. And so before anything else happens to him, I would really greatly appreciate if somebody could guide me and my two other runners, former runners. And like I said, I wouldn't have accomplished or have been the runner that I was without his help and his guidance. So if anyone could please guide me in the process of trying to name the track after Coach McKillop at El Paso High School. Thank you.
Thank you. And someone from staff will come down and provide information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This takes us to item number six, Consent Agenda. I have one speaker on the consent agenda, Mr. Ross Moore.
Board President Erobali, Board Members, Masai Veda. My name is Ross Moore, President El Paso AFT. Just real quickly, I ran the numbers on the consent agenda. You're looking about $5.7 million here. Where'd the money come from? I thought district was broke. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I do have a note for item six, P1. This is the approval of change order number one for SRH back replacement in high occupancy areas of middle schools and high schools, Group 4. Staff is amending their request to say that it will schedule for work for this project going forward as of this day in the amount of $721,761.39 to include remaining temporary services, additional storage, extended warranties, extra labor, and O&amp;P, general liability, builder's risk, bonds as presented. Rather than the $978,325.37. Do any trustees would like to take any items off the agenda? I have item D. Any others? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exemption of item six, D?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Two D. The schedule? Yes, it's six D. So I have a motion by trustee, call. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by trustee Hernandez. That's a motion by call, second by Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously, seven zero. And this will take us to item six, D. Trustee Hernandez?
I really just wanted to know why we're proposing to change the board meeting.
Yes, so this was, I requested it from Ms. Sayavedra to see if it was possible because we're taking some very important items. I have some travel that just came on my calendar as of this week, actually, and saw if we could reschedule it so that I could be a part of the conversations when we talk about compensation, safety, and some other key things that are affecting this district.
My concern is that we've taken several, we've rescheduled several regular board meetings over the last year. I think it's a transparency issue that when we have our board meetings, they're supposed to really be held the Tuesday of every month because that's sort of an expectation of the community that we're holding these regular board meetings. When we do reschedule them and move the date, for me, it's a transparency issue because there's not consistency. So I do have concerns about that. Is it, I guess in my experience, is it typical for us to reschedule the board meeting because of a commitment of one person on the board? Can you walk me through that?
What I would share is just that the board can consider the adjustment of the board meeting calendar at any given time at this point. You know, the new meeting for, the first meeting for the new year. I always think it's best for us to accommodate as many schedules as possible so that we can have a full board to conduct board business. So that's why, for transparency reasons, it's brought forth for the board to consider as a whole, to consider an adjustment.
And I think as transparency is a concern, I think we can maybe ask Ms. Sayavedra to do, if this item passes, to also spend extra time on making sure that that message gets out to the community. We do have over a month's time before the next meeting, so Ms. Sayavedra, if this item does get approved, you can just work with your communications team to maybe share that information across our platforms.
And I'll go ahead and, I mean, I think for this one, you know, there's an understanding that we're going to move, if we move forward this way, it is going to be communicated effectively. But I would just share my sentiment that people don't necessarily always tune in, so they're not aware. They're expecting to either be able to make public comment or to be able to come to a meeting. And I've just felt that the last year, we've had several rescheduling. And so I would just want us to really be cautious about doing that moving forward because prior to this year, I don't really remember us doing that very often unless it was for a holiday. So I think we're making too many exceptions.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we move the meeting from January 16th to January 25th for this one exception due to trustee not being able to attend our meeting.
Do I have a second? That's a motion by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously, seven zero. And that will take us to our final item of the agenda, which is number seven, A, Overview of Future Board Meeting Agenda Items. Ms. Sayavedra?
Yes, there's a lot of, we will be having a safety presentation associated with our safety plan in January. Also, January is School Board Recognition Month, so it's an important time for us to honor our Board of Trustees. We'll also be having a quarterly report on facilities and construction and bond construction, quarterly report, along with a number of other items. But our big high point is to honor the board for School Board Recognition Month in January. So big things on the agenda in the future.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight, Adjournment. It's going, it is 5:35, our fastest meeting yet. And we were going to adjourn. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone. Please go home and enjoy the time with your families. Please go home and enjoy the time with your families.